Call to order, the Village of Riverside Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting of Wednesday, April 27, 2022. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Marhol?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Peltier?
Here.
Commissioner Brum?
Here.
Commissioner Matthews?
Here.
And Chairperson Mateo.
I'm here. We have a quorum. Have we heard from Commissioner Henigan? Do we know if she's coming late or...
She is traveling and won't be able to attend this evening.
Thank you.
So weren't sure if you had heard or not, but she did communicate with us.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the approval of minutes. We have minutes for the special meeting of the commission from February 28, 2022, and regular meeting minutes of March 23, 2022. Does anybody have any edits? I sent two to Francisco. They're truly just clarifying, nothing substantive. So with those edits, do we have a motion to approve both meeting minutes?
Some more.
Second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Peltier?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Commissioner Brum?
Aye.
And Chairperson Mateo?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Nice job on those three-hour meeting minutes. Before moving on to our public hearing, Attorney Mars, would you remind us how votes have consequences when not all members are present? And this isn't to poo-poo anybody who's not present at a meeting. It's just a parliamentarian thing.
Yeah, just for the variation, and I've already talked to the applicant, you need four affirmative votes of the PZC in order for it to be a positive recommendation to the board. Absent that four positive votes, there's a special voting requirement at the board level where you need four trustees to approve it, and the village president does not get to vote. So it just changes it a little bit.
So there might be public hearings where the applicant might want to delay a vote if attendance is not very high, potentially?
Yes, so just a reminder, always try to make the meetings, if at all possible. I know you guys are great about that, but...
Okay, call to order PZ 22-03 to consider request for variation from Section 1073D2 accessory structures and uses and Section 10104C nonconforming buildings and structures of the Riverside zoning ordinance to allow the construction of a deck at five feet above grade and expansion of two existing nonconforming stoops to form a single 280 square foot deck in the rear of the house. The petitioner is Laura Serge at 263 Black Hawk Road. All in favor for opening the meeting?
Aye.
Everybody is still present. There is a public notice published in the Landmark on April 6, 2022, which will be entered into the record as an exhibit. So anybody who will be giving testimony during this public hearing, please stand if you're able and raise your right hand. Is the testimony you're about to give true to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you. Francisco?
So the petitioners at 263 Black Hawk are seeking a variation from Section 1073D2 accessory structures and uses, which states that decks shall not be five feet above grade. They are proposing to construct a deck at the current level that the two steps and decks that they have in the rear yard are, which are five feet above grade. They are also seeking a variation from Section 10104C nonconforming buildings and structures, which states that a building or structure that is nonconforming with respect to its bulk shall not be added to or enlarged unless permitted by certain other specified subsections. The proposed construction and consolidation of the existing stoops and decks would be 280 square feet. The property is zoned R1A in the single-family residence district. The decks or the existing decks/stoops are located in the rear of the house, which is where the proposed consolidated deck would be as well. So it would be out of public view, wouldn't extend too much past the width of the house. And the current...I had a question from Commissioner Miller earlier today regarding the impervious surface. I was able to find a calculation from 2016, which has the impervious surface as 41% currently, and with the addition of this proposal, it would be 45%, so it would still be below that threshold of 50%. They would be adding 280 square feet of, you know, of the proposed deck, which is about the same size as the pavers, excuse me, that are currently in the back, along with the steps and the decks that are back there. There was also another question pertaining to impervious surfaces. There was a letter I found from 2016, because I believe at one point there was concern when construction was originally beginning that the impervious surface was going to exceed the 50%. This is a letter from some land surveyors that states the existing impervious surfaces will be replaced with pervious surfaces so that the 50% of the lot coverage won't be exceeded. I couldn't find what the credit, if there was, I'm assuming there was some credit given to those permeable pavers. I don't know what that percentage was, other than it was below the 50%. And the...there was also, I also asked the building inspector that we have here, because again, Commissioner Miller had a question regarding the construction of the deck. And the building inspector stated that using the existing hardware would be the easiest and most cost-effective way of building this proposal. There are other ways of building a deck that has a step down to meet that four-foot requirement that Riverside has, except it's more cost-prohibitive. You'd have to remove what's there, put in a larger ledger board, that's the width of the house, which is expensive. And there's another option of what is called a floating deck, but the way those are constructed is they would have to do, the piers would have to be near that rear of the house, but because of the way, if I understood him correctly, the way that houses are constructed, that backfill that is there is not the best for piers, and to be able to support something at that with that kind of design. And I also did a little bit of research with regards to decks and surrounding communities. I looked at Elmhurst, Oak Park, Berwyn, Hinsdale, La Grange, La Grange Park, all of them, none of them had a maximum grade requirement. The only requirements they had were based on the, whatever respective building code that they followed. So so long as they followed that, you know, whatever that code was that they had, it was fine, but there was no limit on how tall a deck could be. And that's what I have for you guys, with that information.
Have you received any communication since the memo was published?
Nope, no communication.
Okay. Thank you for doing that research on surrounding communities. So to be clear, the ones that you looked at, none of them have the four-foot maximum height for a deck.
Correct.
Thank you for doing that. Questions for staff before we hear from Ms. Serge? Okay, would you like to go to the podium and tell us about your plans?
Sure, yes. So I think we kind of covered the basics, but we have, it's actually a newer construction home in Riverside. We built five years ago, all to code through the inspection our builder handled. We bought it from him. The back areas are decks that come off of the entrances and exits of the home. So we have a sliding glass door and another entrance/exit that are off the back of the house. So these deck surfaces provide us enter and exit. Just to be clear, it's not just a recreational deck. It actually has a purpose with steps down to the yard and then the detached garage. To give you perspective, I think you have some pictures or possibly some drawings we gave you. So there's a few needs here. The first and foremost is safety. The current structures are in disrepair. They were not built correctly, unfortunately, even though they passed everything on paper. So they, the steps are needing to be ripped out. They're not safe. And then the materials used were not the proper materials. So there's a little bit of a concern there. You can see the lovely pictures on a five-year-old home. So that is the number one thing that we do have that immediate need. And then when looking at the layout of the two structures, they don't quite make sense for functionality. So we do want to connect those and make sure we can have a way to be able to have a very small space with chair, barbecue, things people would ideally want when you exit onto a deck. So that's really, there's some hardships involved here that we are at a structure level with new construction where we have 10-foot ceilings in the basement, which rise, you can see there's a window, a basement window that would be compromised if we were to come down to four. And then floor joists exist due to that height of the ceiling. And when you build a deck, the supports are secure to floor joists to make that a secure structure. So we can't move the floor joists either. The step down, I think Francisco mentioned possible options. The step down is currently to the safety code with one step down. If we were to go to four feet, we'd be looking at three steps, which is not a safe enter and exit for a home, per our architect and everything we've done. So that's a summary. I don't know how much more you would like me to go into. If you have questions, we've been very diligent with the design, with architecture, several contractors, and then we also are looking at material that is very much earth-friendly. It kind of blends in with the landscape. It'll be nothing crazy. I actually have a sample of it on my chair. It's a TimberTech product, so composite. Hopefully, we'll never have to do this again. That's the goal. Yeah. And so we're just looking to really have that current height where our structure is to be, I guess, reapproved, if you will. It's kind of a unique situation because this was all there when the home was built five years ago, the same level, the same height. Good. You do have some pictures there. I can see Joel looking at them. So hopefully, the visual will be better than what I'm describing. But really, just looking for that approval to add this and then to make it a usable space. I think you mentioned the connectivity of the two structures. Right now, it's just a very kind of strange design, if you will. And then the steps are actually, I believe they're not to code, so I'm not sure how that happened, but they do jut out past the house into the driveway, which has become a little bit of a safety hazard as well. So we want to really, you can see our architect came in and kind of reconfigured those to be appropriate and a little bit safer entrance and exit out of the home.
Questions, Ms. Serge?
Well, I have a question. What sort of materials do you plan on having underneath the deck? I see underneath the stairs now, there seems to be loose rock. Will it be loose rock again, or what?
Yep. It'll be a permeable rock. Yes, very similar to that. You're talking ground surface.
Correct.
That's correct.
I have a few questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
Were you the original owners?
We are the original owners, yes.
Okay. So did you bought it as someone else designed the house and then you purchased the house?
It was a new construction project that we purchased from the builder.
So you didn't have any input into how the house or deck was designed?
Depends on how much time you have. No, I'm kidding. No, we did not have input on this design. It was actually not quite what was in our drawings. It was the last piece of the home, and we were four months delayed, so we were ready to close.
The deck part you're talking about?
The deck parts didn't quite come out the way that we all had agreed to, but they were functional. And at the time, to be honest, the material appeared to be quality and a sound structure. And over the last few years, we realized it was unfortunately not built the way that it should have been.
Do you know why that is?
Costs, they cut costs.
So it's not that they put wood into the soil or anything like that?
No, they just use the cheapest materials and interior hardware versus exterior hardware, simple things.
And looking at the photograph, the window that's between the two existing decks, you'd be able to, what would you be doing with that window, I guess, when you...
We'll leave it there.
Okay, so you can build over it?
Yep, that's, so the existing height would clear that window, which was another concern with the four versus five-foot variance. That's correct.
Okay, it just looks like from the bottom of the existing deck, it's like right skimming the top, but it's not an issue?
No.
And then do you know anything about the brick pavers on the property?
Yes.
Like, are they permeable pavers?
Yes.
Do you do any maintenance on them or anything?
No, so they will be, there is a drawing of the new layout where they will be relocated to kind of go with the new location of the steps. So you'll see they're kind of where the deck will go, they'll be moved over to, let's say, the driveway side if you're looking at the picture, because we need, we're going to cover that space there to have a clear entrance off of the driveway. And those are no maintenance, at least not that we're aware of.
So when the bricks are moved, pavers are moved, you're going to have done the proper excavation and building up the gravel base and all that?
Correct. Yep. We have landscapers that are in the queue for that. And I think Francisco mentioned, but also another hardship is the cost to do this without removing the brand-new hardy board and a lot of the materials that were used to construct the home. If we were to move the height, we would have to remove a lot of the back of the house, and that siding is quite expensive and kind of have to reconfigure a lot of material back there. So that would be another major concern. We were looking at all of our options. But the number one thing is safety when you exit and enter that home at that five-foot level.
Can I ask a question, Francisco?
Sure.
Francisco, why are we nonconforming right now for 10-10-4?
Because it's currently at the five-foot grade.
Okay, that's the specific nonconformity.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking.
I thought we didn't have a maximum height for stoops.
So, oh, sorry. Go ahead. Oh, no.
You can take a shot.
No, you can go.
We've had a flurry of back-and-forth emails trying to figure this out.
Yeah, so there is a little bit of conflicting information as to during the approvals of the project itself, they are, they could be considered a deck or a landing stoop, which, you know, landing stoops and the height does not require a height at all. In the materials showing the plan review approval, they use the term "deck," so that was kind of where we stood. Should a deck be permitted to expand from the existing stoops by that nature, it's an expansion, you know, that creates a nonconforming structure. It's expanding that nonconformance of existing height, if that makes sense, for the stairs. Okay.
Yeah, because it was kind of unclear, we included both provisions, just to make sure we were covered.
For you newer commissioners, you missed out on probably two years of discussion about definitions of stoops and decks and porches and...
Yeah, and that's what I was recalling, and I'm defining exactly what a stoop is drawn out.
Okay.
So my understanding of 10-10-4 and 10-10-6 is that if the petitioners were simply extending what's already there and building onto it, they might not even have to come to us for a variation request, but they're going to destroy everything that's there and build anew, and that's why they need to come in front of us. Would you agree, Attorney Mars?
I...
I'm not, I don't know if I...
I was going to say, maybe I misunderstood. So if there were an existing deck that connected each of the doors, right?
Yeah.
Say it was just a single rail, you know, a couple of feet, and they're looking for an expansion, that would be considered that expansion of a nonconforming structure?
Right.
And so because these two are disconnected, but also made of the same materials, made of the same height, and then would be connected, we're considering that an expansion of these existing nonconforming structure. It doesn't mean that they have to tear something down and build it back up. It would just then be permission to construct a new, new structure, if I'm understanding correctly.
Okay, so I'm not sure that's how I would see it.
Okay.
Because it says in 10-10-4, if a nonconforming structure is totally destroyed by a property owner, then the variation, the variation pass of 10-10-6 doesn't apply anymore. But the other way to look at it is because of what you said before, that these are stoops or they're not decks. It doesn't even fall under being a nonconforming structure because they're not nonconforming because there's steps and stoops.
Right, but if you regard them as stoops and then you take them out and build them, you know, connecting all the way across, then arguably, it's not a stoop anymore because...
Right, but I'm saying if you look at it now and it's a step or stoop, it's not nonconforming. So they're not actually building onto a nonconforming structure. So 10-10, the nonconforming structure chapter doesn't even apply here. That's how I see it.
Unless it is a deck and you're stepping out onto a deck.
Not only were there questions in the documents about, sometimes it was called a deck, sometimes it was called a stoop, but it also has elements, building elements that you would typically see in a deck.
Correct.
As opposed to a stoop.
The footings, the pre-poured, the material of wood, the framing.
Wouldn't those all be in a step or a stoop, too? Footings, concrete footings?
You would, but typically, it's, you know, the framing, the material, it's just different than you would see in a concrete, you know, staircase, for example. It's not that.
Regardless, they're destroying it totally. So the chapter doesn't apply at all because they're choosing to destroy it, so, or them.
Maybe this isn't a [inaudible]. It just kind of bothered me, it kind of bothers me with the way we're, you know, we apply things. I don't think it really matters to this case at all. I just would like some, I find the nonconforming provisions of our zoning code a little hard to understand at times and apply.
I know.
Agreed.
We had the same confusion.
Other questions?
I have, I just have a few questions for Francisco or Ashley. So you talked to a building inspector, but you didn't talk to village engineer?
No, I talked to the building inspector that we have here that, with TPI, with Lou.
And it's unclear, I mean, as you sit there, you cannot exact, are you sure, do you have certainty as to the impervious surface that exists on this property?
From what I was able to find, that was the certificate of compliance from the home sale from in 2016. That was what was prepared by, I don't know if it was Sonya or, not sure who it was, but that was the calculation with everything on the property. And then I did the calculations with adding the additional, well, the proposed deck, and that, those were the numbers that I came up with, was at 45%.
So it went from 41% in 2016 to 45% now?
Correct.
And you don't know if that include, if that incluter didn't include the brick pavers?
Oh, no, it did, sorry. It had the pavers listed on the Excel in the sheet, the calculations. It had the papers.
As part of the impervious surface?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So the pavers are being considered as impervious?
In these calculations, they were, yes. So whether or not they received a credit, they might have. There was, I couldn't find any record.
There's no need for them.
Correct, right. Either way, there would be, it would be under that threshold of 50%.
Okay.
Yeah.
But with the construction of the deck, they'll still be under 50%?
Correct. Yep.
Because of the moving pavers?
Yes.
Other questions for the petitioner, for staff? Okay, would somebody, any final comments?
No, thank you.
Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion to either close or continue the public hearing?
I move to close.
Close. Okay, thank you. Take the, roll call, please.
Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Peltier?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Commissioner Brum?
Aye.
And Chairperson Mateo.
Aye. Is that motion carried? So do we want to have some discussion before proposing a motion?
Sure. Based on what we just heard, the pervious, impervious is not relevant to our discussion. Regardless of exactly how these pavers were counted in the past, Francisco's calculations have shown that petitioner is still under the threshold, so that's a non-issue as far as I'm concerned. Second is, this is similar to a variation we approved last time or?
Two months ago.
Two months ago, thank you. I know it's confusing. Happens easily. Where the deck was, the height was very much based on where the existing interior floor was. So this is a very similar situation. Aside from the fact that there's no need to go underneath as the previous petitioner had, it still fits within the, there's the window below and then the floor above, and that restricts where this deck should be in relation to the house.
The only thing I would say is, since we've had two of these proposals in three months, I wonder if the village board should consider doing something with this limitation?
It's under discussion.
Okay. Yeah, I, I don't want to interrupt. Regardless of what action the commission takes, we will incorporate that discussion likely in communication with the village board.
You'll probably remember, if we get the same variation requests more than once, that suggests that maybe we need to take a look at our code. That will happen. I made a mistake. I did not ask if there are any interested parties who wanted to speak. Okay, good. Other comments? Somebody like to make a motion then?
Do you want to go through the standards?
Motion to move.
One's a motion.
Variation at 263 Black Hawk Road for the accessory structure that is five feet above grade.
Second. Okay, let's go through the standards. If you're following along on the PDF from the agenda packet, it starts on page 15. So because of a particular physical or other unusual condition to the specific property involved, a particular hardship or practical difficulty to the owner would result as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. Such conditions may include, but are not limited to, the presence of an existing use or structure, whether conforming or nonconforming, irregular or substandard shape or size, exceptional topographical features, or other extraordinary physical condition peculiar to and inherent in the subject property that amounts to more than a mere inconvenience to the owner and that relate to or arises out of the land or lot or structures thereon rather than the personal situation of the current owner of the lot, or situations in which the ordinance prevents the owner from re-establishing, restoring, or maintaining a material feature or significant architectural feature related to the lot or structure, or from maintaining the architectural integrity of the lot. Thoughts on practical difficulties, hardships?
As I just noted, the first floor and the basement window restrict the appropriate location of the ledger board, which is the attachment of the deck to the house. And those, based on some personal knowledge, ledger boards and those connections are considered rather essential to the safety of the structure itself. I mean, they have to be attached. There's not really a lot of leeway. Francisco noted that there might be some options, but really, the basement window keeps that from happening in an appropriate manner.
So the existing structures?
Yes, for me, it's that window. The existence of that window is the only thing that changed my mind, so I'm glad you brought a photograph because I couldn't see that before.
Okay. B, the purpose of the variation is not based primarily upon a desire to increase financial gain?
True.
C, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person presently having an interest in the property?
Correct.
That's true.
D, the conditions upon which the petition for variation is based would not be applicable generally to other property within the same zoning classification?
I think in general, that's true, but if builders continue building houses like this that have this kind of configuration, we may see more of that, unless we change our zoning provision.
E, the granting of the variation will not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other property or improvements in the neighborhood in which the property is located?
Correct.
That's true.
F, the granting of the variation will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood?
Correct.
We had no comments brought to us. And finally, G, the proposed variation will not impair inadequate support. And finally, G, the proposed variation will not impair inadequate supply of light or air to adjacent property, or substantially increase the congestion of the public streets, or increase the danger of fire, or impair natural drainage, or create drainage problems on adjacent properties, or endanger the public safety, or substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood.
Correct.
True. Okay, any final comments? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Marhol.
Aye.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Commissioner Peltier.
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews.
Aye.
Commissioner Brahm.
Aye.
And Chairperson Mateo.
Aye, motion carries. So we are recommending body, the village board has the final decision, and it would likely go to their first or second meeting.
First.
Wow. Which is May 6th?
Fifth.
Fifth. So staff will let you know. Thank you for coming.
So in my zeal to get the meeting started, I skipped a few agenda items. I'm seeing a trend here. Are there any visitor comments, not related to items on the agenda? Okay. Do you have liaison report?
A few updates. Trustee Pollock presented the accessory structures amendments to the board two board meetings ago, so we will be talking with him again to go over that, and then we should hopefully have something for planning and zoning with some clarification. Not board-related, but PCC-related. At the last preservation meeting, the Metro signage updates from, from Metro were brought forth to the Preservation Commission. They looked those over, they had some concerns regarding some of the language in the, in the proposed amendments, so we will be getting back to them with more, you know, with a clarified, with an updated version of that at the next meeting next month. And same with text amendments, the general text amendments will also be, will be looked at by the Preservation Commission.
Thank you. Going to change up the order of the agenda since, are you both here for Lawton? Okay. You're just one night out.
I'm here for, I'm, the.
Okay. Well, if you don't, well, that's going to be a longer discussion, so I think we should do the site plan review, if you're okay with that, so we'll move ahead with that. So site plan review for 2848 Lawton Road to consider revised site plan proposal to add five or more parking spaces to an existing parking lot at a multifamily property in the B2 district. And the petitioner is Riverside Lawton LLC, Mr. Melzer. All right, Francisco?
So the site plan that I printed out and put in your spots earlier today is the one that Mr. Melzer will be presenting tonight. It's a little bit different, the only difference between this one and the one that was in the packet is the one in the packet doesn't show an exit to the north on the parking lot, the paper copy in front of you does, so that shows the direction of traffic to get out of the lot. So it is similar to the one from the, I believe it was the December meeting, that was presented before you. The requirements for a parking lot like this would be, the drive aisles need to be 24 feet in width, the parking spots all need to be nine feet by 18 feet, and in the, in this case, because there are 20 proposed parking spots, the requirement by Riverside are four landscaped islands on the, on the property of at least 144 square feet. But otherwise, it's, it's very similar to the December meeting, that was, you know, the site plan that was brought forth to you. With the, you know, the main difference is being that the, all of these parking spots would meet the requirements, I believe the December meeting, they were eight feet in width, and it's a two-way parking lot in the back of the building, no requirements for, because it doesn't abut any sort of residential districts right away, there are no other, you know, requirements for, for that, especially because I believe it's in the B2 district. But those, if there are any questions, I can hopefully answer those.
I'll start with questions for Francisco. Are there two drive aisles, then, going down the direction?
Yes. Mm-hmm, there are two drive aisles, yes. One going, what would be, let's see, one going toward the, toward the bank, and then the, I believe the entrance would be coming in from the alley.
Would you mind going to the podium? I have a question. So the two landscaping islands on the north side, on the, these maps, they don't show what the width is, whereas the ones on the south side, one is eight foot wide, one is seven foot wide, so we're just curious what those widths would, will be?
So I did some rough calculations on Adobe earlier today. The two on the, on the right-hand side, I measured to be roughly seven by nineteen, seven feet by 19 feet for both.
Right, that's correct.
So staff is satisfied with the, the parking island requirements?
Mm-hmm. And then with regards to the, the square footage size, because this is still kind of, it's in the beginning stages, the, Mr. Melzer, you know, is aware of the requirements for the 144 square feet for those landscaping islands.
So should, should this go forward and be approved by the commission? You know, these are preliminary site plan drawings, and so as part of the approval process for a building permit, they would need to, you know, submit, you know, official drawings for engineering plans that show and demonstrate those requirements. I believe that in the initial meeting, where this was a topic of discussion, the commission's, some of the commission's concerns were related specifically to not having marked on a site plan where approximately some of these features of the parking lot would be and planned. At that time, the parking islands weren't marked at, at all, and, and were simply stated that they would be present upon the building construction, and so here, the petitioners made an effort to, to show exactly where, where the planned features of the lot is and direction of traffic, marking some bollards and, and other light poles, et cetera, that were of, of discussion last.
Commissioner Brahm, you had a question about easement last time, do you still have concerns?
I did, I did have that question, and when I looked at this, I, I wondered, I never did receive a copy of that easement, I don't, I think if, I think the other party to the easement would have more concerns than necessarily we would, or I would. I guess I, approving or, or blessing the site plan, I will not necessarily need to see that easement.
Okay. So the, the drive aisles are wide enough under?
Correct, yes.
I, just one curi, a question of curiosity, when you're going out towards the bank, there's that large, open rectangular area, what, is there anything that that was intended to be used for? Just to the left, you know, if you'd continued straight, it looks like?
Right, like if you're going out the bank and to the left, that little square?
Yeah, exactly, it looks like it could be a parking spot, or maybe you're intending to use it for something else, storage or something?
Uh, there's a drain there right now, and one of the residents, I think, has like her table there.
Okay.
So we weren't, we weren't planning to do anything with that.
Okay. Is space number 20 ADA?
Uh.
It's much wider than.
It's just, it's just wider, there's more space there than the others, figured we might, we might use that extra space for snow, or, but it's, it just happens to be a bigger space.
Okay. And if I recall correctly, given the number of units in the building, ADA was not required? Is that correct?
Correct.
From what I remember, that's correct.
Yes.
Other questions, comments?
To your point, Chairperson Mateo, space 19, although it's probably not perfectly compliant with ADA requirements, certainly has the, the space towards the bank that would allow for more convenience for someone who's got restricted mobility. The space, essentially, there's a space, there is area between parking spaces 20 and 19 that certainly would allow for more use by ADA.
And as you pointed out, these are not the final plans.
Yes, exactly.
Motion, anybody would like, would anybody like to make a motion regarding approving or not approving the site plan?
Motion to approve the site plan is presented, and within the assumptions that it goes to the appropriate drawings for village plan review, or sorry, construction review, sorry, can't think of my words.
A second. Teresa, just a sec. Okay, please call the roll.
Commissioner Marhol.
Aye.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Commissioner Peltier.
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews.
Aye.
Commissioner Brahm.
Aye.
And Chairperson Mateo.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next on our list is the public hearing regarding text amendments and the discussion of tech, other text amendments. I'm pleased that this was only 40 minutes. Does anybody want to take a quick break, or do you want to plow ahead? Okay, let's plow ahead. Call to order, PZ dash, PZ 22 dash 04, to consider proposed text amendments which include transit-oriented development code changes and other changes affecting various sections of the Riverside zoning ordinance, including but not limited to Section 10-4 residential districts, Section 10-5-7 business districts, Section 10-7 site development standards, Section 10-9 landscaping and screening, Section 10-10-7 nonconforming residential driveways, Chapter 11 definitions of the Riverside zoning ordinance, and Title IV, Chapter III signs of the Village Code of the Village of Riverside. The petitioner is the Village of Riverside. All in favor for opening the public hearing?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries. A public notice was published in Riverside Brookfield Landmark on April 6, and will be entered into the record as an exhibit. Also with us is our consultant from EGRIT and OX, Todd Van Aalde, so thank you for being here. Can you hear us, and can we hear you?
Yes, I can hear you clearly, thank you.
Excellent.
It's good to see you.
Good to see you. Todd, you're the only one will be swearing in. Oh, actually, both of you, if you want to provide testimony tonight, if, please stand if you're able, and raise your right hand.
Are you planning to speak?
Okay.
Just in case.
Todd as well?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Is the testimony you're about to give true to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, AVM Monroe.
Oh, sorry, you, you created an acronym I wasn't prepared for. It took a second to digest, I appreciate that.
And as soon as I said it, I thought, I should have told her, I'm going to try out AVM, because it's a lot better.
I like it. I heard my name rang in there at some point, and I figured it was time for me. Okay, so welcome, opening the public hearing. I will clarify, Chairperson Mateo read a very long list of text amendments that are proposed in various chapters of our zoning code and village code. The ordinance that's been prepared for consideration, including many of those passages, does not include sections from Title IV, Chapter III, which is our sign code. Upon further review and a little discussion, there's a little bit more work that we would like to do before preparing it for public hearing and, and further discussion here at this time. Certainly, you can bring up additional questions as they pertain to that, to that chapter, if you like, this evening, and we'll try to address questions and prepare for May's meeting. The other items have been discussed predominantly at the last meeting of Planning and Zoning Commission, where we walked through various items at, you know, through discussion, and through that discussion determined various proposed changes. So we did our best to identify these particular changes, and in brief, I won't read them word for word, but highlighting the, the main changes in these various sections include changing the zoning administrator from the community development director to the assistant village manager title, and including gender-neutral pronouns where they appear in the zoning code. Section 10-22 dash 4E and 10-42 will incorporate language supporting multimodal transportation into our considerations for site plan reviews, so talking about multimodal, bicycle, pedestrian, transit users, and that being the purpose of our transit-oriented development code update. We are incorporating a couple of changes into the use and bulk requirement tables in Section 10-4-5. The first table in that section, the use section in residential, is going to be incorporated into the second ordinance, this is pertaining only to the bulk requirements for residential districts. The lighting standards are updated based on the proposed language from the consultant group and the steering committee for encouraging sustainability and minimizing light pollution. Part of the conversation at the last meeting was, was directed at potential for additional lighting standard changes, so, but for purposes of this, this code, I think they're broad enough for staff to be able to address a lot of the concerns about errant light emitted from, from areas, you know, where it's put, whether decorative lighting or otherwise. Screening standards, identify considerations for enhancement of a built environment for pedestrians, bicyclists, and transit users, so we talked about fencing, about other types of, of screening considerations, and that's adjusted here in the ordinance before you. A new section on sustainable design is incorporated into Section 10-9-2 in the landscape design standards, and the ordinance also clarifies existing procedures for existing nonconforming residential driveway widths. So as part of that, I will verify, but there have been two, two revised figures or, or images for driveway width, new graphics that are going to be included, and I will verify whether those are incorporated into this particular ordinance. I don't believe they are in this section, and they'll be addressed in the next, next iteration of the ordinance change. But I wanted to draw that, that's really the biggest change in the most recent version of a consultant memo prepared, that was something of note to, to make you aware of. We can talk more about that during other discussion on the remainder of proposed changes. But that describes the ordinance before you, and we'll answer any questions about, about this, or as you walk through standards. Thanks.
Should we just go through the redlining, section by section, and see if there are any questions or comments?
Okay.
So if you're on the PDF, it starts on page 42 of the PDF.
I actually have a comment on 10-
I actually have a comment on 10-12I, where it says to classify, regulate, and restrict the location of trades and industries and the location of building design for specified employment-generating commercial uses. I feel like we are actually decreasing our ability to regulate commercial uses by only saying employment-generating commercial uses.
And Todd, it was your intent to have "commercial" be one use, "employment-generating" another use, "residential" another use. Is that correct? You're muted.
Sorry. The reason why we did include the term "employment-generating" is because it's more to be supportive of transit, oftentimes being two major things that you need to support transit, which includes jobs or residential units, and then jobs, which is the employment-generating part of that phrase. So, in terms of the actual, where you separate it, like, "commercial," I'd have, what, I was trying to look for the actual part that you're alluding to, so I can actually look at the actual code. What was the page number in the packet?
In the...
I just wanted to make sure that I'm looking at this.
It's page 42 in the packet?
Forty-two, okay.
We changed it slightly from version four.
Oh, I see.
And the way that it's written, it actually limits, the addition of the employment-generating description actually limits our ability to regulate commercial uses.
Sure, I can actually see that. I think in this case, we could probably strike it, eliminate that employment-generating, and just leave it as "commercial" generalized. I'm okay with that.
I'll also just note that there's an extra comma after "commercial," we'll remove. Any else, anything else on this section? Off to a good start. Zoning Administrator? Are you okay with that? Okay, on to site plan review. It's pretty minimal. Any changes requested? Okay. 10-42. Okay, 10-45, Section 7. So, Todd, in the footnote for that one, this is the residential district bulk requirements. You had added a footnote about bulk requirements for schools, religious institutions, and other places of assembly that provide for cultural sports or other events, blah, 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 not blah, 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 et cetera. This is so small, I can barely read it. "May necessitate a greater level of review of lot dimensions, coverage, building height, and yard requirements at the discretion of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Village Board." So, when we last discussed this, I think our impression was that was too vague to be put into zoning code, so we recommended taking it out. But since you're here and since it's also going to be in our discussion for business districts, we wondered if you could speak to why you, why this wasn't more specified, or how this language was decided on.
Excuse me, is that in the, is that in the residential bulk?
No, because we decided to take it out.
Okay, so you're referencing back to, okay, all right. I know exactly what it is. I'm just confused then. Sorry.
To answer your first question, the original intent of including it was to provide clarity and kind of some more, to allow the village officials greater latitude in terms of reviewing plans for special cases like schools and churches and other religious institutions that, when you're just looking at the code without that footnote, and you're just looking at, sometimes when they're proposing, whether it's an expansion, a built-out community like Riverside is probably not going to get a completely new school. It'll most likely get an expansion or tear down a new building on the same property. But with that, when it comes to schools and other uses such as that, like that, the types of, the parking and the lighting that's often generated by these uses often requires a lot more purview by village officials to make sure that they fit the neighborhood that's in, so that there's not excessive parking, excessive lighting, and so on. So, that was the original intent of including the language. To your second point about whether or not it was too generalized, we can definitely go back in if you want to include it, but be a lot more specific. We can work with staff to be more specific with the language and not leave it so generalized. I think one reason why we left it general is because that general, that generalization does keep it, I guess, general, to use that term again, for village officials to discuss when it is up for discussion, whether at review stage or a public hearing stage and so on. So, hopefully that at least lays the groundwork to answer your questions.
Yes, that's helpful, thank you. I'm just trying to imagine how, for example, we had a school expand two years ago, we had a church that was thinking of expanding, so specific provisions might have been handy there, especially if we didn't need to require as much parking for a large use. But as written and as you just discussed, I'm not sure how it goes beyond what would be in the special use hearing and probably a variation hearing, which would be most likely. I'm also, for the commissioners, I'm trying to not throw it out if it's something that could be helpful for us going forward, but I think we want something a little more specific, and I don't know what that is. AVM Monroe had one proposal. Do you, basically, if you, go ahead.
I actually need to, need to find this, but essentially, being very specific in how we would address these particular issues. So, if it's more about the bulk of a particular property, about, you know, the lot size that would trigger some type of additional review, so basically, you know, the commission's concern was that it's this kind of, you know, this broad term in determining when we need that additional review and what that review would look like. And so, if we need to make more specific recommendations, we can tweak the special use process itself potentially, based on the characteristics or certain criteria of these lots, rather than by determining it by the type of use that would trigger that requirement. So, if it's, you know, the lot size, for instance, that would, or the mass of a building on that lot, that would be the issue, rather than, that would trigger that additional criteria maybe that we would be looking at through the special use process or variance process, rather than the use itself being, you know, on this list of buildings that we would look at more closely, schools or churches or whatever the case is. So, it just, it's up for discussion and, you know, that was just something I threw out today.
Would that kind of thing fall under the very site plan review ordinance we were just looking at with the multi-residents, or is it different, do those not apply to schools and institutions and nonprofit?
They're the same, so if we were to, if we want to see something specific when it pertains to that, if there's a parking, you know, parking requirements or other characteristics of a lot or development that we would like to see more information about in order to make determinations, then, you know, we'd have to change the code. Or could we do that administratively?
I don't know if some of the uses outside the commercial districts require site plan review, I'm trying to remember.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Okay, because the schools...
We didn't do site plan reviews for St. Mary or for Ames.
Or for Ames, that was my recollection as well. Is this intended to be permissive or restrictive? Are you trying to give the village officials more leeway on these subjects, or make sure that they look at it closely because of these type of uses?
It was a very good question. It was your first response, it was to give village officials more leeways. And I guess after hearing what Ashley mentioned about maybe tweaking the special use language and striking this language, I think it's more or less trying to give them additional cover, so that when a school or a church or similar use does come up, that language allows them that latitude. But if we feel like the special use language covers that, and this is redundant of that, we can always strike it and just tweak the special use language, just to strengthen that. So, hopefully that answers your question.
And I would support where AVM Monroe is going is, rather than this note that really, I honestly cannot tell which way it's supposed to go, if it's supposed to be more restrictive or less, it just seems to add a level of descriptive scrutiny that is already in the special use process. So, I think if we're going to go anywhere, it's specific to, let's make adjustments in special use discussion and not this note. The note honestly isn't particularly helpful.
Other commissioners?
Since we're discussing these notes, and I'm looking at the one for the business bulk requirement table, that's what I'm looking at for footnote three, right above that is footnote two, and I don't see why footnote two wouldn't apply to schools and religious institutions and other places of assembly. And footnote two is the one that says non-residential uses may apply a maximum 20% parking reduction in their parking requirements in transit-oriented areas, including the B2 districts and B1, Todd, district. So, would that also apply to schools as long as they're in the transit-oriented, or was there an intention that that was excluding the types of institutions in footnote three? Is that clear?
I think that the footnotes were to be taken together and not necessarily saying that it didn't apply to two, but I can see how that was, so it's, yeah, at this point, it's just trying to clarify the language as you're all clarifying right now, so.
So, is our consensus still to keep that footnote in the residential district struck and continue a conversation, perhaps post TOD, about some language that would potentially help us moving forward?
I'd like to do that, yes.
Okay. Other comments, other comments on this table? Minimum building height, changes to maximum building height?
I guess, since we're discussing here, so when I look at the building height, it's for the other residential districts, it's 32 feet or three stories, 30 feet or two and a half stories, and then for the R3 and R4, it's 48 feet or four stories. So, why does it jump from 32 feet for three stories to 48 feet for four stories? Why a 16-foot jump?
Do you see where Commissioner Miller's talking about, Todd?
Yeah, a maximum building height in the table.
Yeah, I can see that. I mean, I guess the original language was maximum height was 35. I think part of it was, we did a, earlier in the process, we did a height study where we actually just looked at all the heights in the districts, or of all the districts, just to see what was typical and what is in, existing today in Riverside. And I think there was comfort that a three-story was, a three-story max was appropriate for R2, or R1AA, R1A and R2, but then R3 and R4, there was a little more comfort to bump it up to four to five stories, which is why it's 48, or four stories versus 32 feet and three stories.
Yeah, I was just curious about 16 feet relating to a single story, that's all. It doesn't bother you?
Oh, why was it a jump like that?
I just don't know why it's 48 feet, unless there's an intention that you're going to have a basement level and that's going to protrude out of the ground a certain amount, you know.
That's something I can get back to you on, I guess, I'll have to look back at my notes to see why it was a jump by 16 feet and not a different number, so, but thank you for raising that, I will look into that.
I'm unclear, if there is a basement living story that extends above the surface of the ground, is that considered a story? So, would that actually limit what we're doing here? Should we say five stories if that could happen, instead of four stories?
I haven't encountered yet development here in Riverside that is, you know, that the questions come up about how we count a half kind of garden story, you know, whether that would be, I guess it depends on where that grade is determined as to what proportion of that dwelling would be above or below, below that grade, which is, which is why from a staffing perspective, at least we have, you know, it's nice to have the option of saying it's up to 48 feet or four stories, you know, there's some qualifier there. I'm not sure if that would include something like air, you know, other mechanical fixtures potentially on top of a roof in the center of those buildings. R3 and R4 tend to be, the great majority of that zoning is either kind of on the west portion of town, off of forest area, there's a lot on Harlem Avenue, and kind of a little bit of a stretch on that Burlington Quincy near the rail, rail line. So, just to give you a sense of where in town those, that zoning district exists, those two.
Anything else in this section? And sir, if you have any comments, just feel free to chime in. All right, next one is 10-72, exterior lighting.
Oh, I do actually have a comment on that. I think that the "may" should be changed to "should." So, the code issued by the Dark Sky Association should be consulted, not "may," just to make it a little bit stronger.
What are your thoughts on that?
I agree.
They can consult and not follow, so.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Anything else?
Do you mind if we use "shall" instead of "should"? It's a legal thing.
No, I actually would prefer "shall," I was...
Okay.
Catching a little.
Thank you, we shall. 10-91.
Excuse me, can we, can we just go back to B again with the outdoor lighting code handbook?
Sure.
I don't necessarily have a problem with using "shall," but a thought occurred to me that, I'm not that familiar with outdoor lighting code handbook, but what if it becomes... that, I'm not that familiar with outdoor lighting code handbook, but what if it becomes extinct or no longer in existence for whatever reason? What if it's updated? What if it's, should we be using the latest version of that handbook? Should we be using, you know, if in existence at the time of review? What is...
A comparable set of standards, something like that you're suggesting? Put in, or a comparable...
If we're using, if we're using shall rather than may, shouldn't we make sure that something is in existence if we're making the requirement to use it?
Well, we could say the most current version, and then if such time it disappears, we can look for a replacement or remove it.
You could say the most recent version because the most recent version will always be the most recent version even if it disappears. It's never going away.
Can we ask, Todd, is this a longstanding publication? It's been around?
It's been around for a while. I know Village of Homer Glen has been using it for a while. I think a few other communities in the Chicago region have been using it. I can't give you a date at the moment in terms of how long it's been published and how often they update it. I can get back to you on that if you want that information. But I do agree that I think it probably makes sense to add language about using the most current version and then maybe even adding a language about, or use an equivalent handbook just in case this particular organization stopped publishing and if there's like another organization similar to them. But yeah, language to that effect might be helpful just to answer Commissioner Brahm's question.
I would, Commissioner Matthews' idea is good. The most recent version if available, otherwise something comparable.
I'm fine with that.
Got to give us a second to update our notes.
Well, the last version will always be available. They may just not update it anymore, right?
Yeah.
That's correct. I was giving the out if somehow something goes south.
You satisfied? 10-91. 10-92, landscaping design standards. 10-10-7, non-conforming driveways.
Could I ask a question? It's just, I don't, since we're taking out their existing footprint, does that mean that they can be moved? Because that's kind of what by taking out existing footprint and not also retaining that, it suggests to me that the location of the driveway could be slightly moved. Does anyone else share that concern?
I see what you're saying. So one of the issues that we ran into is the version that we had last time did not, was not the most, the one that was in what we looked at last month was not the most up-to-date. So this, the tail end of the sentence to current radii standards and this language about existing footprint weren't in there. So we tried to make it work and I thought to a width equal to or less was intended to replace within their existing footprint. It's like the same idea, but I see what you're saying. So we might want to say within their existing footprint to a width equal or less than the original width.
I think just...
And that was just us trying to address the fact that some text had been missing. So I think your change makes sense. If everyone's good with it.
That's just another pronoun change. 10-11-13.
10-11-3?
Sorry?
10-11-3?
Sorry, yes.
I have what is, so I had the same, I made this comment last time and I don't know if it was rejected or just overlooked. Under the definition of co-working space, it starts out a structure comprised of, and I think that's going to be too limiting in application. So if you look at the live-work space, that definition says a structure or portion of a structure. So at a minimum, I would suggest we use that language in a co-working space because by saying a structure, that sounds like it's just a pre-standing building all by itself. That's a co-working space.
So add or portion of a structure?
I think so. The other option is to reference like the use and not the structure, but I think...
That's fine.
When we were drafting, the next section is 10-11-4, other terms defined. So we just had a list of definitions and we had to choose which, whether they were other terms or uses. But after reviewing what you're going to talk about later tonight, I realized that electric vehicle charging station was intended as a use. So I would propose moving that from other terms defined where we put it a couple pages ahead here over to the use definition section. Do you see what I mean?
Do you want to skip ahead to that or can we finish the other red sections and the uses?
Nope, I don't want to skip.
Wait. You don't want to skip ahead or you don't want to skip the other ones?
Don't want to skip ahead.
Okay.
I just brought it up because it's being moved to this section.
Any other comments on these uses? So under independent living, we just want to make sure that at the end of it, that we don't have elderly. Different versions have it and some don't. Just want to make sure we don't there. If it's in whatever documents being worked from. We've replaced it with just older adult.
Older.
That would, that would read in that particular definition, these complexes may offer minimal convenience services but focus on attracting older adult residents to provide social support.
Okay. Okay, we can move on to other terms. Page 52 of the packet.
So I had a question about the redline addition at the end of the building height definition. I don't understand the purpose of it.
Well, I should note that it's in our current code. This isn't an addition. Oh, so I'm not sure why it's redlined.
Oh, what is it? Okay, I didn't realize that. I thought it was in... I mean, but if we, if we reference the change in the bulk requirement table, that was also, there was also apparently a redline change to that. So in that for maximum building height, when the B1 Todd category was added, maybe I'm not making, maybe this doesn't make sense. So when the B1 Todd was added, there's no reference to a roof line for some reason. And I just wonder if that could cause trouble if someone decided to have a very tall fancy peak roof or who knows what. So maximum building height for B1C, it says maximum 48 feet, but normal, no more than three stories, six, 60 feet but no more than four, five stories is permitted as a special use. And then in the B1TC, there's a reference to the peak of a pitched roof shall not exceed 50 feet. But then in the B1 Todd, there's no reference, it says maximum 60 feet but no more than five stories, again with no reference to the height of a roof line. So I'm just concerned, I don't know, that might not be part of what we're looking at right now in this hearing because we're not looking at that table.
This is just telling us how to measure building height. I'm not sure why it doesn't apply to B2, but there it is. Todd, do you remember? Oh, you didn't make this addition. Just because it's red doesn't mean you did it.
But I would listen to the concern and I do feel like if there is, it does make sense to have consistent language, referencing roof line for B1, the other B1 districts, and should be consistent with B1, the new B1 TOD district. So if we do need to go back, I guess we'll get to that when we get to the table later on in our discussion, but I do recognize that concern that was raised and I do agree that there should be consistent language. So I marked in my notes that, to take a look at that.
Thank you.
The bulk table in, for the B2 district requirements also makes mention of the peak of a pitched roof with a height requirement. So if we were to incorporate that into the B1 TOD, then it would be the same, you know, structure of, of language used in each of those district tables.
Well, maybe this last sentence should be moved to somewhere more appropriate. Because it's not really term, it's a process. We talked about how to measure grade somewhere else. I'm not sure this needs to be in the definition.
Isn't it, it's, this is discussing how to measure the building height. It talks about grade. It seems like it should be, but I take your point as to why it doesn't apply to B2 sub-districts.
A little more investigating needs to be done on that one.
So, so I guess, I mean, the whole thing is kind of a process, right? So the very first sentence is telling how you measure building height and then they have an alternative definition for the B1 for whatever reason here at the end. And again, I know the consultant didn't do it, it's been there a long time, but, and so part of the question is why it's just B1, right? As opposed to B2?
Because they're going to have front sidewalks as well.
Yep. Do we maybe want to move, remove building height definition from the amendments tonight while we look into it or? I mean, it's really just amending the, updating the table tonight, right? Because this shouldn't be redlined.
Right.
So we could always add this definition back in in a later amendment if you wanted. So we could update the figure now, the table now, and come back after we have more information and make additional changes in a future amendment.
Makes sense. What do you guys think?
So we'll leave it in.
How does the figure need to be...
Because the graphic is the only change.
Right.
Does the figure need to be changed?
Figures.
The figure was updated because the original figure was, was very blurry in the document, so we just, just cleaned it up, but the actual labeling didn't change at all.
Better, much clearer.
Again, more graphics are cleaned up. Oh, I knew I was going to forget. Throughout all of the zoning code, can we make sure that the text always refers to figure Sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't.
Yes. Well, thank you for reviewing this piece of the code so far. We've got plenty more to go. Do, as far as process, Attorney Maher, what, what is the process at this point in time? We've reviewed these. There have been a couple of very specific adjustments to the proposed language in the ordinance and a couple pieces that should be removed for the time being. How do you, how do we proceed?
Rich, I think everybody was clear and there was consensus on the changes, correct? Did anybody have any issues with the changes? So if we just, is there already a motion?
No, we haven't closed the public hearing yet.
Okay, so following the close of the public hearing and any discussion, the motion can just incorporate the changes that we talked through tonight.
Okay. Sir, anything, Dan? Nope, okay. Todd, any final thoughts, at least for that part?
No, thank you for the time to, to answer your questions and I'd be happy to join your next meeting if you need me to attend.
Thank you. So is there a motion to close or continue the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion to close.
Close.
Second.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Peltier?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Commissioner Brahm?
Aye.
And Chairperson Mateo?
Aye. Motion carries. Thanks, everyone. One step further into the process. Okay. Oh. Standards. Can't retract those votes.
Well, no, that was just to close the public hearing.
Oh, God. It's contagious. Because it's 90 degrees in here. All right, further discussion. Standards are on page 38 of the PDF for those following along. So again, for text amendments, the standards are a little bit different and not all of them need to be met. So first one, A, the extent to which the proposed amendment promotes the public health, safety, comfort, convenience, and general welfare of the village. Yes. I think especially promoting transit-oriented development, that certainly is met. B, the relative gain to the public as compared to the hardship imposed on the applicant. Doesn't really apply. C, the consistency of the proposed amendment with village plans. Yes. Let's write in with our plans. D, the consistency of the proposed amendment with the intent and general regulations of the zoning ordinance.
Yes.
Some clarifications in there. E, whether the proposed amendment corrects an error or omission, adds clarification to existing requirements, or reflects a change in policy.
Yes.
True.
And it brings in the TOD thoughts.
So mostly a change in policy or preference for the village. F, the proposed amendment will benefit the residents of the village as a whole and not just the applicant, property owners, neighbors, or any property under construction or other special interest groups, and the extent to which the proposed use would be in the public interest and would not serve solely the interests of the applicant. Okay, is there a motion or recommendation?
Motion to, I will, motion to recommend.
With the changes discussed.
Of course.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. They're just looking at each other.
I know.
Jump in there. Any further, final discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Marhol.
Aye.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Commissioner Peltier.
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews.
Aye.
Commissioner Brum.
Aye.
And Chairperson Mateo.
Aye. Motion carries.
All right, so the revised version will be brought to the village board.
Next up is old business, continuation of discussion on additional portions of transit-oriented development zoning code update. Should write it down on page. So I have that on page 63 of the PDF.
Okay. Well, the fun continues and it's, I am looking forward to continuing with this process. I think it's been really helpful to work through the code changes as proposed in this way and appreciate all the time that everybody's spent on review and asking good questions about this. So today, I, to help work through some of the memo, actually prepared a very brief kind of document using slides to identify sections of the code that we would be looking through today with particular sections of changes outlined. So everything that we have not so far covered is, as far as proposed code changes, is included in this particular memo. It was a little bit more challenging because chapters five and eight in particular had a greater extent of changes, so I didn't copy and paste each individual section into here. They are all included, those particular pages and sections in your memo, which is why I prepared this accompanying document. So with that, I will just note that although the commission had already talked about chapter three zoning districts, this was brought just as a refresher essentially, as a reminder that we're talking about modifying and, you know, clarifying the district names, but also that we're talking about adding a B1 transit-oriented development zoning district. And so that, of course, pertains to other aspects of the code that we've been talking about, some that we've already discussed, and just noting that as a change. And then the other changes, as we walk through them, are pertaining to chapter five business districts. Chapter six is use standards. There are very minimal changes in that section in particular. And then chapter eight deals with off-street parking, which is standard vehicles, incorporation of additional new bike parking design standards, electric vehicle charging station, and some other changes. So I will let you discuss, but to, you know, yeah, so I'll let you discuss and take it section by section and I'll answer questions as needed. Okay? Are there any notes on just the incorporation of the new district in general and whether that meets the intent of the code?
We haven't, we've talked about recommending creating a B1 TOD. Anybody have further thoughts on it?
My only recommendation I think I made a few meetings ago is I don't know why it doesn't extend further north along Harlem. Because the current area where the B1 TOD is slated seem to me to all be fairly shallow lots. I'm not sure what kind of redevelopment can occur there, anything else, whereas if you move further to the north, the lots in R3, I think it's R3 and R4, are quite large and spacious, so that would only be my issue for thought by the village board and whoever else is involved in this process.
Todd, would I be putting words in your mouth that you'd say it's further from transit, public transit? And that's why you did not go further?
I think we had discussed the, I might need to pull up a map just to see the street names, but I think we did a discussion amongst the steering committee as to whether or not we wanted to go one extra block north. I'm blanking on the actual street name, but I think there was a reason why we didn't, and I think we had a back and forth amongst the committee to consider extending further north as being discussed here. And I think we landed on staying where it is currently, as currently proposed, but we can certainly open the door back, open the door back up to consider going a little bit further north. But to answer your question, Chairperson Mateo, I think about if it's related to being distance from transit, typically the, for a TOD, it's usually a half mile walking distance or to the nearest transit station, and I guess in this case it would be the metro station on the east side of Harlem. So I think it would be in that, still in that comfortable walking distance that's typical. So we use that as the guiding, guidepost and say that's how far we would want to extend it. But I think there was a reason why we chose not to extend it that far north. We also had a discussion of whether the southern boundary where we cut it off made sense. And I think we discussed maybe going another, further block south, but I think in our discussions as a committee, we decided to land where we are now. But it's not a closed door in terms of extending it further north or south, or both, or in both directions. So I'd be happy to entertain to see if there is, if it doesn't make sense to extend it. There isn't a major reason why we didn't. I think it was just, that's where we landed as a group as to where we wanted to keep it, so.
Yeah, I had asked, would we want to consider having it match the business district, which has, you know, an extra taxing, which goes up to Shenstone? And I, we discussed it, I don't remember what the parameters were, why we decided to stop, you know, just north of Addison. But at the top.
Did it have to do with the fact that that's R3 and you would be rezoning and the implications that that might have for that property?
I think that's, it could be. I don't know what those implications would be. I just think that maybe someone, the village board, someone should be considering it.
Yeah.
Right, so for instance, if you can't have residential in the B1 on the ground floor, all of a sudden you've created, you know, non-conformities for those existing residents and that can have issues in terms of refinancing and that kind of stuff. It's not that you can't do it.
Right. Well, I think that just should be, I guess, be considered by someone because those properties do present a nice, I don't know, they seem appealing for redevelopment if we were truly interested in transit-oriented development because of their size and all the rest. Also, just note, I think they are definitely, some of them, some of the R3 properties are definitely within a half mile of the train station. Furthermore, I don't think we've ever gotten any notation as to where the bus stops are along Harlem, but I'm guessing there are bus stops all along Harlem, or there will be as part of the pace-pulse system, which would probably mean that that entire stretch of Harlem would be within a transit-oriented development definition.
That is correct. So there are multiple existing pace bus stops along Harlem and then the potential to add pace, the pace-pulse BRT service. So there are three potential stations for the pace-pulse line that would go at, along Harlem at the, one at, I gotta pull up a map because I'm blanking on all of the street names, but where the Harlem Avenue, where the Bruin train station is at, oh, basically where the intersection of the rail line. And then the furthest north, I think it's 31st Street, if I, or 20, either 26th or 31st Street at the far north, and then at the southern end it would be at Ogden. And I think they're still, it's still under further study as to what will be the final station points along the pace-pulse bus line. I think they would only, I think they would probably only do two of those three at the beginning and whether or not they would add that third station later. But I think at the very preliminary stages, they had considered it three, but I think they may have struck it down to two. But just, I think going back, so even if, we do need to keep in mind that even if a particular property is in zoned B1 TOD, that doesn't necessarily mean that, like, if a multifamily use is zoned R4, it still has TOD qualities because it provides that density of residents close to a transit line on Harlem Avenue. So even if it doesn't have the designation, the zoning designation of TOD, it still has qualities of TOD because it has that density. So I think we need to keep that in mind, so. I just wanted to throw that out there as something to consider when we're considering whether or not to extend the B1 TOD boundary line.
So the current zoning map predates all of us, I suspect, but the B1C currently matches what the proposed TOD is in terms of going halfway up between Addison and Shenstone. That's an apartment building. It apparently has a hair salon on the ground floor, but can anybody think of a reason why that would have been included in B1C rather than R3? I mean, it's splitting the block.
Yeah, I don't, I don't understand. To pick up on Todd's point, one of my other criticisms about this process was that I find that a lot of the B1 sub-districts are, basically have the same provisions, and they are all equally friendly to transit because the dwellings on the ground floor, all the specific uses, all the rest are very similar, I find, in the way this has been written. But when it comes to the R3 district along Harlem, that's not true. And so that's why I would suggest someone considering extending the B1 Todd into some of those areas. Unless it has, you know, serious legal ramifications or financing ramifications or whatever, but I just think someone should consider it.
Other commissioners?
I actually agree that it makes sense for Harlem Avenue to be more of a business district
Is there any information that we would want to get before we discuss this again? The implications for taxing or legal or?
It could be a consideration for another time. So in other words, we, you know, go through all of these text amendments for the TOD without necessarily expanding it at this time, but perhaps an expansion is something we want to consider.
I think to your point, knowing the implications of expanding it in terms of village services and taxing and if there's any existing, now we're grandfathering everything that's there already, so that's not an issue, I believe. But those would be helpful items to know as we consider expanding it.
I think what I'm hearing is we're okay with the TOD as proposed currently and we can revisit.
Mm-hmm.
So again, scrolling down through the red lines, I'm on page 71, we did, we're fine with purpose and intent. And then we started discussing the sub-districts. Any other comments there?
The sentence in B, 1051B, at the end that was added, I just think that could be more clear. I'm not sure exactly what we're trying to get at. And appropriately building up employment and resident generating uses to support transit.
So increasing density, Todd, would be one factor there?
Correct, it's to increase the density so that you have the number of residents and employee and workers who are taking transit to support the transit lines, whether it's pace or the metro station. So that's the general intent of that additional red line at the end of that line item B. And we could mention density if that would help clarify, but.
The goal is, sorry, the goal is more than, more so than to support transit, it's to provide customers of transit. That's basically what the goal.
Correct, it's to help boost ridership, but also to boost economic development. So when you boost ridership, you prevent, you provide more people who can frequent businesses along Harlem, whether or not they're before, after they're taking their train or their bus, they could drop off dry cleaning, they could go to a cafe and so on. So it's, it basically, it does both things, meets both.
I think we need to mention the fact that our intent is to increase density. So what if it said appropriately building up employment and resident generating density and uses to support transit?
I don't see anybody flinching.
I wish we had a better term than building up. I mean, are we trying to increase? Is that what we're trying?
It's, so if, so if what we're trying to do is create density and support transit with a volume of users, does it make sense to just say those things then? So it would say something like, while at the same time permitting needed revitalization and, you know, creating appropriate density that supports an increased volume of transit users and, you know, advances economic activity or local economic activity or something like to that effect? Is that more? Is that more directly saying what we want? Or is that going too far?
I mean, I think we should say exactly what we mean. And, I mean, resident generating uses is the one that I have problems with because that sounds like we're cloning people. I mean, so, but my suggestion would be that we ask Mr. Mars just to take a crack at this and then come back to us because we can probably all have a different opinion on the best language here, but maybe when presented something from his pen, we can all sign off on it.
I would even suggest maybe, you know, looking at the entire paragraph because it could be that it's already said in there. I don't know. I mean, as I read that entire paragraph, or there could be a different place. This is like tacking on a clause to the end, which doesn't, I mean, we talk elsewhere about infill development and all the rest. It could be that the whole paragraph could be recrafted in a better, more sensible way.
I'm on it.
That's good.
Make it so.
But seconding what Commissioner Mathew said is, we need to be clear about what our intent is, because that is why we're sitting here for, to assess this language, we have a goal in mind. Let's be clear about that goal.
And would you state that goal as increasing density to support transit, essentially?
I believe so, yes.
When you mean dens, when you say density, density of all uses, all units, basically, having more units of either office or?
We're allowing greater height. We're encouraging more units per property by allowing that, yes.
So when I think of density, as maybe as me, I only think of residential density. I don't, but maybe.
Commercial density is something too, though.
I guess, yes, maybe that's, I guess I was just thinking.
More businesses, more but smaller businesses. I don't want to preclude someone with a creative idea who thinks of ways to create employment. So I, I don't want to automatic, someone to automatically to read this and say, oh, I can't do that. We're trying to encourage more walking, more people coming here, more people living in this area. More people using mass transit.
Do you have enough?
Yeah.
Okay. Look forward to it.
I had some comments on sub-paragraph C, the new B1 transit-oriented development paragraph. For the first sentence of that, I think it should not say a transit-supported mixed-use area along the railroad and in close proximity, because none of it's really along the railroad for the B1TOD. It's on, there's one property on either side of it, of the railroad, but not really along the railroad. And then further along, says residential uses are permitted above the ground floor only. That's not true because we've, unless we change it, because right now they're allowed as special uses. So that just has to be connected with whatever we decide on the uses. And then it says uses appropriately transitioned to surrounding single-family neighborhoods. And I guess that's okay, but there's also, it butts up against that R3 district, which is not a single-family neighborhood.
But everything to the west is.
Yes. So that's not as serious, I guess, but the other two, I thought, are valid comments. And anyway, what does that mean, anyway? Uses appropriately transitioned? Because is there going to be, are we going to be transitioning uses? Are we going to be carefully crafting developments so that they sort of step down in this rather small B1TOD district to the res, I mean, they can't because it's only one block deep, so they can't really transition.
Todd, can you clarify what uses appropriately transition means? So we're on 10-5-2C.
Yeah. I mean, in a sense, that could mean, so residential uses, next residential uses could be considered an appropriate transition, but I could see how, like, the bulk of a, like, if it's an apartment or a higher-density residential, some people might not see that as an appropriate transition because of the density difference between a single-family and a non-single-family. But I think that's generally what was going for versus, and I guess if you had a commercial use right next to a single-family, I guess there's ways to buffer that. And I do see the point that there isn't really much room to do a lot of transitioning because it's just one lot deep. But then you do see in the B2 districts, those are right next to a lot of residential as well. So I think it's, that might, that language might need to be edited along with the rest of that paragraph, taking the points just suggested just now. So we'll have to take a closer look at that and massage that language a bit more.
So focus on buffering kind of between different zoning districts while also encouraging pedestrian and bike-friendly environments, so it's not encompassed with fences, for example.
Yes.
I suppose I take Commissioner Miller's point, along the railroad. When it then goes to say in close proximity to nearby bus and commuter rail facilities, that probably takes care of it. Commissioner Bell's here.
So we would remove the along the railroad? To her point, it really is not along the railroad, it's along Harlem.
Right.
Right. And I understand that the bus statement applies to Harlem, but the along the railroad doesn't apply at all.
Right, and if we retain and commuter rail facilities, it'll still be highlighted that it's surrounding.
Anything along the railroad would also be in close proximity to commuter rail facilities, so I don't think that we need the term along the railroad.
Agree.
Anything else in this section?
To be clear, so this sentence now reads the B1 TOD sub-district is intended as a transit-supported mixed-use area in close proximity to nearby bus and commuter rail facilities. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry.
And last sentence to be determined, to be edited. 10-5-3.
So I had a comment on sub-paragraph four, which starts limitations on inactive ground floor uses. If no one has anything for that.
That's page 74 of the packet. So this would be a considerable change. Well, not considerable, but it's, it's a change. So we have two permitted uses, dwellings above the ground floor and offices above the ground floor. Other uses of the ground floor would be special uses. Again, to try to encourage active spaces.
My limited comment on this is for D, which says allow offices at the ground floor of a multi-story building as a special use. And my question is, do we want to make all offices at the ground floor of a multi-story building come through as a special use procedure? Because if we're trying to generate foot traffic, my, I'm just thinking if anyone else wants to think about this, don't some offices generate a fair amount of foot traffic? Like, maybe, I'm thinking medical and dental offices. I, so, it's just something to consider. Because I think the special use process is somewhat, well, it's obviously somewhat cumbersome, costs people a lot of money, a fair amount of money, a lot of time to go through that.
Right, one of the challenges you would face, though, is that, you know, the offices are all just one definition, right? So we would almost need to create two different classes of offices.
You kind of do in the sentencing, the main body of the paragraph, where it says inactive uses like certain offices. What are certain offices? I mean, I understand the goal. You almost, we need to provide clarity around inactive and active.
And yeah, there's a, I mean, it discusses, further down in that section, there's a discussion. It says inactive ground floor uses may also gain less benefit, and it sort of provides some kind of a philosophy about inactive versus active. I'm not even, well, I think the decision-makers in the village should have that discussion. I don't know if it belongs in our zoning code, though, but it just seems very wordy. It seems like, I don't know, it doesn't seem appropriate for the zoning code to me. And then, so we also have the other, again, the returning issue of, in B, it says allow dwellings at the ground floor as a special use, going back to that issue of how restrictive is having a special use. I think it's more important to me to not allow dwellings at the ground floor than not allow offices. And I kind of just see that they're both being put into the same category, they can go through the same process. But I think, I mean, I guess in that process of going through special use, perhaps it would be harder for a dwelling to meet the hurdle of being a special use. I guess that could be.
If you're, if, if the goal was to create an active use, then a dwelling would be less appropriate than an office.
I think we should, yes. So my argument would be, and this will come up later, is to not allow dwellings at the ground floor.
Other thoughts?
I think the issue you're gonna run into, I don't know if this is why they're positing it as a special use, is that in the event you get someone who wishes to put up a new building and wants to live there, and that's not, that's not unheard of. I mean, I think the guy, at one point, the owner of the arcade, was living in there, and not on the ground floor. So now maybe, I mean, I think you can make that, say, you know, well, you know, we want you to build your new building, but we can't let you live on the ground floor. But I can see the special use coming in there. Your statement about offices, I mean, to me, I mean, I get where you're going, but to me, like, the distinction of an office is that you're, you're there for an appointment. You know, you're not, it's not encouraging people to come in and out whenever they want. You know, you're going to a doctor when you have your doctor's appointment, and then you're leaving, you know? So I kind of get that, and I'm more supportive, I mean, I guess I'm just saying I understand your point, but I also think, you know, allowing a special use rather than an outright prohibition does give us a little more wiggle room.
I don't disagree with that. I mean, I don't, I don't have necessarily a problem with the, what is it, A through F? A through E?
Sure, okay with it.
I am, I am, I stay with that. I do think that the philosophical discussion, both prior and after, are possibly not appropriate for the code, particularly the utilization of special uses provides the village officials, I mean, that's maybe more appropriate in the special use section than it is here. You know what I mean, to explain why, how special uses work.
Or it's a footnote.
Pardon?
Or it's a footnote.
I think it's probably stated elsewhere.
I mean, some of these proposed changes, the consultants have provided more verbiage than we tend to see, but I'm trying to think of PZCs in 20 years. Why do they do that? Well, that information is retained in there, so maybe we can condense some of the language.
And that's where I was going with the footnote, is the footnote describes kind of the goals and the philosophy, but it doesn't put it in the language of, here's what you do.
Yeah. Todd, can you remind me what municipalities have this code?
So we were looking at, we were trying to find some local codes in the Chicago region. We didn't really find any that, that met what we're looking for. So the one that, the model that we used was actually on the West Coast. Even though it's not in the region, it still has some applicability because ground floor uses are everywhere, doesn't really matter what part of the nation. So, always at Redwood City? Yeah, I remember it's in California, just couldn't remember the exact city, but yeah, thank you for reminding me. So, yeah, so that was the model we used, and we modified it a bit because some of it wasn't worth it, because it was more along a suburban corridor and not necessarily like a somewhat more urbanized corridor like Harlem. So we did amend it to be a lot more tailored to Riverside.
Assistant Village Manager Monroe, would you, do you have an opinion on this idea of putting sort of guidance in footnotes in zoning codes? Is that something that's done?
Well, from an interpretation standpoint, it really depends on the philosophy, I think, of the municipality that's enacting those zoning codes. So if they would like less, I guess, opinion from staff about how to proceed with a particular issue, more text is helpful in determining what exactly the expectations of that community are. There's a little bit more leeway in saying, you know, we are putting this proposed project forward to the deciding body, whether it be the commission or the village board potentially, in circumstances where it's silent on an issue. You know, I make a phone call maybe to Attorney Mars at a certain point, or have to ask other communities exactly what they do in those circumstances, right? So in terms of, yeah, answering that particular question, I'm, I don't know if you have any thoughts about how useful that kind of guidance is?
I think it's half and half sometimes. Sometimes it does clarify, other times it just, it makes you go down a different kind of, I wouldn't call it a rabbit hole, but you, it kind of expands the, you know, what you're trying to interpret, and it makes it a little bit more difficult and doesn't really, it muddies the water. really, it muddies the waters a little more.
Depending on how it's written?
Right, yeah.
I suppose it could also limit, too. Like, if there was less verbiage there, there'd be more, you could do more things, you could interpret the language differently, whereas if it's, yeah.
You know, another way that we, we go about deciding how to, to look at things is the history of how that ordinance came to be. And so we'd have to look back at minutes or the ordinance itself, and/or findings of fact, or whatever that is, to help determine what the purpose of including that information was, and, and kind of go from there. So that would be how I would, how I would practice that. If there was a question, we, we'd just try to kind of decide, when did this happen? What was going on at the time? And, and is there something that we need to address or not based on that information found?
Doing that kind of research is difficult, I assume, or maybe impossible.
It, it can be, depending on how long ago it was. So, for instance, if you were asking me why we created an ordinance in 1971, I may have a challenging time, you know, interpreting why that was. So it, it just depends. Something 10 years ago, absolutely, we could try to identify that. But as people leave an organization, philosophy of zoning changes, it just, it does get harder.
It may be more appropriate under the purpose and intent portion rather than...
Attorney Mars?
Right. I wanted to say, you know, I don't know if this is the right place, or whether it should be a footnote, or whether it should be shortened, but in general, the idea of this, I, I kind of like, because a special use is, unlike a variation where you're asking for something contrary to the code, a special use is an acknowledgement that we're okay with this use here, but we want to look at the specific impacts of that at this location. And this gives the board and you something to hang your hat on as to why we may not want that particular use at this place in the TOD district, because it's not generating the foot, the foot traffic that we're looking for. Whereas without this kind of language, it seems like more open to challenge by a petitioner who's denied. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Actually, I have a question for the consultant on this as well. Todd, have you run across other codes that address this particular type of issue with dwellings or certain uses on a ground floor that have certain criteria for those, like personal services are allowed, or if it's a certain square footage of the building or units that are, you know, eligible for allowing certain types of either commercial or activity, or offices, or dwellings? Have you run across that much, or is that complicated?
It does get a little bit complicated, because I think that's why we had to have, why we included that clarifying language of what was inactive versus inactive use. And I can see where that can also kind of get into kind of discussions as to what's appropriate and what's not appropriate. But I think dwellings are a little bit easier, because most, most often than not, you don't really see dwellings at the ground floor. There's a reason for that, is either they're restricted outright, like that has been suggested, or there might be an appropriate time where if it's, like, if it's a live-work situation, and if it's designed in a certain way, where maybe the residence is on the ground floor, but it's in the rear, and then there's more active, like, an art space up front in the storefront, that might be considered appropriate. But that, that is up to the community to, to figure out if that's what they want to do in terms of allowing, so, and I think this goes back to the idea of saying it as a special use creates that leeway, so that you're saying, as Attorney Mars was saying, we think generally that it might be, it, it could be okay here, but we really want to get, kind of get down to the nuts and bolts and figure out what exactly is being proposed specifically, and, and make a determination as to yes or no to, okay, the use as proposed, or say, no, it's, it's, it's not meeting the intent of what we want for Harlem Avenue, so.
Thank you.
Sure.
So if you were to add F, live-work spaces, would you make them on the ground floor, make those special uses as well?
I think we left, I think we, we went back and forth on separating live-work spaces as a separate use for, outside of an office, and I think we decided to lump live-work spaces and co-work spaces, lump it all together as general office, just because we didn't want to kind of make those gradations of different types of offices. So I think we didn't separate out live-work spaces as a separate thing to consider, we just thought it could just be office. So I get, again, I guess that goes back to special use. It would be an office, but in this particular case, it's a special type of office. It's an office that has a residential component, if it's a live-work space, so.
Thank you.
In the definition of live-work space, there is a little discussion there, too, about how you could arrange a live-work space. And if you have more than one story, typically, the living space is above, and the workspace is below. But you could have a single story, and then they could be sort of mixed, adjacent to each other, so.
Can you pull your microphone a little bit closer, please?
Sure. Yes, I can. Sorry.
Okay, so 10-5-4, are we good with it? Okay, 10-5-5, page 75 of the PDF.
Well, what was the decision? Is this language staying at this location? Or going to purpose and intent, or going as a footnote?
So we can leave it there and condense it? We can move it to PNI, or we can create a footnote?
Or any combination of the, I mean, it could be more direct, I think.
Right, okay. Maybe just general direction to look at the options and make some changes.
Yep.
See what you think.
Okay, that was clear.
Keep philosophical parts to either PNI or a footnote, maybe the item four is more just directive.
Got it. That makes sense.
And then I would, again, just comment that when it comes to special uses, if we really want to control how these things are done, and address foot traffic, and the atmosphere of the district we want, we might want to change our special use provision in the zoning code. Because I'm skeptical.
It's on the list.
Okay.
What page is that?
Seventy-six. I have a comment at the very end, just before 10-5-7. Since it says include but not limited to, can we take out et cetera? I don't like et cetera in code. 10-5-7?
On page forty-six, which is seventy-eight, number two, is it necessary to say including buildings with rear facades that face the railroad? We say facades of large buildings on all four sides. I don't, I don't see any reason.
I agree with Commissioner Halkier.
Todd, any reason to not take that out? Did you have something specific in mind?
No, I think that's fine. I think it was just a little bit of consistency with a few pages earlier about the rear facades, but I think the way the commissioner described it, I think, makes sense. So, yeah, we can strike it.
Do we define large anywhere? Is it necessary?
More than one story?
We could change it to multi-story, yeah, more than one story.
I was thinking more on length than height when it comes to large, because it's talking about...
Bays?
Yeah, exactly, bays.
What about facades of, I mean, essentially, we'd be talking about non-residential buildings here. So facades of non-residential buildings, or...
Multi-tenant? Well, I mean, if it's large enough and it's a single tenant, you'd still want it broken up.
Exactly. I'm veering towards where Commissioner Manigot is going, which is just, any large structure, any non-residential structure needs to be broken up, so it avoids that giant warehouse look.
Well, this is a business district, so I don't know that we need to say non-residential, because we might have mixed use. So facades of multi-story buildings? Will that work?
It's the length.
But it won't, yeah, it won't take care of the length.
So what's our minimum bay size? Twenty feet?
Can you say multi-story, multi-bay, or does that not make sense? I've never heard the term.
What I'm thinking is, is if you look along Harlem, a typical business is probably about twenty feet wide. That's a bay. So anything larger than twenty feet, we want it broken up.
Well, the second sentence takes care of it. Oh, no, I see your point. It's still applied to a single-story building.
We're just saying you have to break, do that breakup.
Facades of buildings wider than twenty feet?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that too small? I don't, I'm, I'm looking at John.
I don't know. I'm trying to figure what twenty feet would be, you know what I mean? I can't, I can't visualize.
A typical Chicago lot, a typical Chicago lot is twenty-five feet. So think of a Chicago street.
And that's where I'm getting the twenty, that's where I'm getting the twenty feet, is figure, longer than that, you can do two bays. There's architectural creativity in this, too.
How would that work in terms of, like, national chains that have a certain design that they want to roll out?
They're not going to like it. That doesn't necessarily mean that it's a bad idea.
But, but what is, what is a multi-bay, let's say it's a McDonald's, what would a, what would the differentiation be on the front of a building like that? What would you be looking for?
The question describes it fairly well here, is you just need something to eliminate that idea of a giant vast canvas. So, I mean, setting two sets of windows with a pillar in between will get you somewhere towards...
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think this, this is not so restrictive that an architect can't figure out something.
Got it. Yeah, and I know most of the chains have like a standard design, and then if you, that's not going to work, then they have more elaborate ones, right?
And they, the large chains, I mean, we've seen it in other communities, where they want to put up the big, tall, fifty-foot sign, and I'll pick it, I don't know this for sure, so yell at me when you want, but Glencoe says, or Will Matt says, no, you have to keep it at ground level.
Right.
And they end up living with it, and they do pretty well.
Yep.
So we're not keeping them away.
I think twenty is too small, though.
Twenty-five?
Maybe forty.
Well, we don't want this big forty-foot-wide blank canvas. That's what we're...
Well, is there information we want for our next meeting?
And don't, don't we have the fenestration requirements, too? Isn't that going to prevent? Or is that not true? The window requirements for, is that just storefronts? And if this is not a storefront building, then that wouldn't apply?
This is all four sides, so...
Yeah. That, that distinction of including that on all four sides would give some direction as far as the architectural design and the, you know, differentiation of material used, a breakup of a wall with windows, or some other type of decorative material, you know, a cutout in a wall that would be a pillar or some other thing to just create some type of visual interest, rather than that blank wall on all four sides. That's not currently clear as to whether you, you can operate with windows on just two sides of a building, as long as it meets the, the window requirements, or whether it's, you know, I think it'll help distinct, the distinction of using this kind of requirement on each of the sides of the building would be, would be helpful there.
And we could drop the length of form entirely, and just say facades on all four sides shall be visually broken into bays.
So I have a question about that.
Allows that creativity. You have to break, raise all their words in here, then tell you what the goal is.
So referencing bays, is that an architectural term? I have no idea what that means. To me, a bay would be like a distinct segment. And is that what we want? Like, segment, segment, segment?
The rest of it, I think the rest of the sentence gives the reader a clue, is avoid the appearance of large blank walls.
But then why, it seems like, to me, bay seems restrictive, like I have to have bays. I mean, I'm just such a, I just...
But it says in the next sentence that, which supports the idea of what the bay is, is visual breaks in the facade, you know, plain, height, materials, color, texture. There's a lot of room in here for an architect to provide a facade.
Okay, that's fine. I would suggest, I'm not sure we landed on the residential, non-residential, but it seems to me we need to say non-residential buildings, if that's what we mean, unless we want to apply this to residential buildings. Because we allow in the B2 multifamily, single-family, and duo-family, two-family structures.
I'm okay with applying this globally to any structure in the B2 district. Again, no big blank walls.
I mean, I think the argument for non-residential, for drawing that distinction, is that any residential structure is de facto going to be broken up because of exit requirements, and you legally, you know, fire, fire codes.
Windows.
You're going to have to, windows, windows, you got to have them. Whereas, you know, I mean, because what we're talking about here is a large box structure. We're talking about a warehouse. I mean, it wouldn't have to be a warehouse, but that's, that's what we're looking at, with a, with a long blank wall facing the railroad, which is, we want to get away from, because people look at that and they say, ugh, you know?
Correct.
So I think, and that's why I'd argue for any non-residential, facades of non-residential buildings, and just include them all, just rope them all into that.
And that'll work. I, the words here are sufficient to the architect that they're going to have to do something. We don't want to get too direct on that.
What about mixed-use buildings, then?
Those are probably...
Do you want to say any building with commercial uses?
Either that.
So that if you have commercial on the first floor, then this applies?
That would work, yeah.
Yeah, that'll work.
Do you want to say any building with commercial uses?
Either that.
So that if you have commercial on the first floor, then this applies?
That would work, yeah.
Yeah, that'll work.
So, facades of commercial buildings instead of large?
Buildings with commercial uses.
Oh, right. Anything else in this section?
Actually, I wanted all buildings because if we have a residential building that has a flat sea of windows, then that is going to be one giant sea of glass. So, I think this needs to go to all buildings.
You mean like an apartment building that would have a lot of windows?
Sure.
Like a Mies-VanderOoghe kind of thing?
Yes, Mies could be a good, although if you go to IIT, you will see that his buildings are broken up into bays with...
So, that would qualify for you, then? That would be okay, to have a sea of glass as long as it's broken up, perhaps with the whole one million...
We are looking for the breaking it up. We don't want one single canvas that we stare at and wonder what we can draw on it with spray paint.
Are we okay with all buildings?
That's fine.
So, we're just getting rid of the word "large"?
Yep.
I think so.
Because a lot of them got there.
It's good conversation.
Maybe we'll learn what bays are by next meeting. It's not a car wash.
Almost there.
Okay, 10-5-9, Houston bulk requirement tables.
We have the dwelling at the ground floor issue, whether that should be permitted, special, or not permitted.
Right, that's why it was added with the S's.
Right.
Todd, currently in B1C, townhouses are permitted, I'm guessing, and you're suggesting a change to special use. Do you remember why? So, I'm on page 80 of the PDF.
I'm on page 80.
Of the packet. Same thing for multifamily.
I'm trying to see, I don't see the townhouses under, under table four, business districts permitted uses?
Right, the first section is residential, assisted living, dwelling above ground floor, dwelling at ground floor, and then the next two are dwelling, multiple family, dwelling townhouse, and I believe you propose...
Oh, I see it.
But having it permitted in TOD. I'm wondering why the difference.
B1C, so TC is transition. Yeah, I think there was a reason for why it was special in B1C, and I'm, I'm trying to think back as to why it was not permitted like the other two. And I think it was a, I need to look at the zoning map just to kind of ground myself as to why that was.
Because what would be left for B1C if the TOD is created is the northeastern corner by 26 in Harlem and the southeastern corner on Ogden in Harlem.
At Ogden.
I'm just not sure if they are permitted now. Why change that?
Yeah, I don't see why they wouldn't be permitted, and I think, I think I'm, it may have been because of where they were located, because of, I think, at the far northern end of Harlem, it's right next to like a, like a transformer or a, like a utility, and then at the far southern end at Ogden, it actually would make more, make sense there. So, I have no problem changing it back to a P to permit it.
I was wrong. It wasn't P, it's blank, so not allowed in the current code for B1C.
Would it, would it be, would it be because we want to reserve those areas for commercial development?
Yep.
Because that's, I mean, both of those are extraordinarily busy corners, you know?
So, why not leave them blank?
Yeah.
As they are now.
Right, I think John's saying that's why they were...
Yeah. Yeah, so I think, but, yeah, I mean, either, either way, I mean, blank is probably best.
So, it's changed, are we okay with changing those two dwellings, multiple family and townhouse, to blank for B1C?
Sure.
And shouldn't dwelling townhouse, it seems like that should not be permitted in TOD? I mean, a townhouse almost by definition is residential on the first floor.
Well, at the last meeting, we had a discussion, I mean, I think I asked the question, are there townhouses that start on the second floor? And I think you said, yes, you could do that, so you could not have the ground floor, but you could still have a townhouse above the ground floor.
Okay.
Well, you could say dwelling townhouse except on the first floor.
Yeah.
I mean, I've seen that in zoning codes.
So, we're agreeing to take out the dwelling at the ground floor as special use and it won't be allowed? Is that what everyone has agreed to?
We're taking out the special uses from B1C, which then raises the question in the TOD, which was B1C, should those also be blank?
Okay, all right.
Again, because they're residential and... Are you okay with that?
Yeah, so just to clarify, so dwelling at the ground floor, not allowed in B1C and B1 TOD, is that?
I think that needs to be part of this commentary.
And then the cannabis adult use, short version is, I recommend we keep it the way it is now. It's not allowed in B2 and it's permitted in B1.
Right, and Todd, I don't think you may be privy to the background, but we, the, the policy decision was we wanted it as a permitted use so long as they complied with the various licensing requirements in 1062K, so that, you know, it was inviting to dispensaries to come because, because they're an attractive business to, to the village from a revenue-generating standpoint and foot-traffic standpoint. But they did not want the other type of business establishments, like the cultivation centers, the processing centers, again, just because those are not consumer-oriented. So, so that those were prohibited altogether. So, so to the chairperson's point, I, I think, you know, based on the policy discussions that were had just in the last couple of years, I think we would probably want to leave that how it is. And this is all underlined here, but they are currently in the table. If you look online, the cannabis dispensary is, is already in the table as a permitted use, which you're looking at now.
Any questions on that?
No, I think I got it. Thank you.
So, further down on the table, it talks about office at the ground floor of a multi-story building. And maybe a single server, but this, this is the part that I thought was inconsistent with that inactive uses section, where it says, no offices at the ground floor. But I'm trying to go back to that, make sure that's what it said.
No, there'll be special uses rather than...
There'd be special uses.
It said it's only special uses, okay.
So, those designations for office are okay as is, right?
And I think I asked you this before, Todd, why not allow a restaurant with drive-through facilities in the TOD?
I think the reason for that is, I think for TOD, we want to encourage more biking and pedestrian-oriented, and I think creating a drive-through, allowing the drive-through, while there's still going to be, there's not, there's always going to be cars along Harlem. I think we wanted to create the atmosphere of not having, like, audio-oriented uses in a TOD district, particularly where drive-throughs have, can deal with stacking issues on, during peak periods, whether at a bank or at a restaurant, where cars can spill out onto the street or onto adjacent lots. So, I think that's, that was the main intent of, of not allowing it, or allowing it as, yeah, not allowing it in B1 TOD. Yeah, I think that was where, how we landed on that decision.
Thank you.
I feel more comfortable with that as a special use, a restaurant with drive-through in the TOD. I mean, I understand we're trying to get foot traffic, but a lot of facilities, a lot of restaurants are, have drive-throughs or want drive-throughs. I would hate to completely eliminate it as an option.
I argue against that. And in part, I argue against it, again, because our B1 Todd is so small.
But it's all along Harlem, which is, which is the most attractive...
True, but it could be in the B1C, which would be good in the B1C where some of the larger properties are. I mean, you only, these properties on the B1 Todd are very shallow. If you were to, I don't, you know, if you were to have a drive-through, I just don't see practically how it would work, and if it did work, it would use up a lot of the property and you'd be going off of Harlem and then back on Harlem, and I just don't...
But that's why it's a special use, because they have to come to us, and if it's not appropriate because of the size of the...
Okay.
Lot, then...
Other thoughts?
I, I agree. I, I just don't want to preclude ourselves from anything because you just never know what's around the corner. We don't know what things are going to look like in 10 years, you know? And I, this just gives us more options. As long as it's a special use, I'm fine.
I agree with having it as a special use.
Okay, not hearing any dissent.
So, going a little bit further down, I was curious as to why schools that are professional and vocational are treated differently than schools that are specialized instructional, being that in the B1 Todd, one is considered a special use and one is considered a permitted use.
Can we hold that thought?
Yes.
Before we get there?
Okay.
There's at the bottom of PDF, page 81, retail sales establishment with drive-through facilities. Again, it's left blank for the TOD. Make that special as well? Sorry, Commissioner Miller.
Okay, I just have a question for the consultant, I suppose, as to why those two types of schools are treated differently.
Yes, I think that was just a typo. I think they should be the same. I think that was just a kind of a, an oversight, that they should both be consistent.
Well, I don't think Todd did that originally. They were treated differently by some prior board.
I, I would think that is, oh, I'm sorry. I, I would think that a school specialized instructional are the, are the tutoring outlets we currently have. There's one on Quincy, and then there's one on Burlington, whereas a school professional or vocational is, was like, you know, the bartender's school that used to be in Harlem, and then you could also conceivably have other types of vocational schools there. And I, and I can see why you might want to, you know, make a distinction between those two. I can't really articulate why you'd want to do that, but I can see, I think you might want to.
I, I think the specialized instructional was added for the driving school that went into that area.
That would make sense.
Oh, the driving school.
Bet you have a memory.
Which is gone now.
But vocational, to Commissioner Matthew's point, I think of something that would instruct you to how to do a job, and I, I think of, then I, then I think of perhaps welding or things that could be dangerous or, so I, I would, I like the distinction between the two. Perhaps there needs to be a definition between vocational and instructional. Instructional, to me, means a little bit less dangerous. Vocational could be more hazardous.
So, vocational is a school, other than a community college or four-year college, that provides vocational and technical training in a variety of technical subjects and trades for specific occupations. Instructional school provides classes in driving, test prep, cooking, martial arts, exercise, yoga, Pilates, or similar uses that are taught for a fee. This does not include professional vocational schools.
Oh, so it's in our definitions already?
Okay.
Okay.
That clarity helps because when it talks about the yoga or very much more, shoot, I can't think of the words here, but more enjoyable rather than commercially viable personal goals.
What would a gymnasium be, or, you know, a health facility can be considered under our code? We do have one actually in Harlem, or we used to have one in Harlem, I think. Is that a school, or is that something totally different that we don't have?
Recreation, indoor and outdoor.
Okay.
Like Strive, you mean?
Yeah, right.
Like storefront type?
Yes, or one that has machines. I passed one on Madison today in Forest Park. Okay, maybe that would be recreation, sure.
So, are we okay with those uses, then?
I had a question as to why place of worship was added as a separate. I thought that just fell under place of assembly. In the definitions, there's not a separate use definition for place of worship, nor do I think there should be. I think we should treat them as an assembly use. Because the definition of place of assembly includes religious uses.
I think that's a good point. We could just merge those two. I think that's...
There's a definition for place of worship, not in the same definition section as place of assembly.
Is it existing?
Yes, existing.
It's in the next section, I think.
So, 10-11-3 has the place of assembly, which is a new definition, and I think it's 10-11-4 has place of worship, or is an old definition. So, maybe that needs to be deleted.
Other terms defined?
I'm just suggesting that be cleaned up, not that we do anything about it in this section,
but, yeah, place of worship includes churches, temples, synagogues, or other gathering places which may or may not have schools as part of the complex and/or meeting facilities, and accessory uses such as parish houses or recreational facilities that serve members of the congregation.
Are they included in any of the current use tables? I would think not since it's in other terms defined, right?
That's your pay grade.
Yep. Yep. So place of assembly. Right, so I guess my point is place of assembly already says it includes places of worship. So if we leave the places of worship definition in there, that's fine, but we shouldn't list it as a separate use on a use table because it's already under place of assembly.
Yeah.
That makes sense?
Okay.
Well, in the B2, they are separate. So when we get to that.
Okay.
Okay, anything else in this table? Let's look at the B2 sub-districts. Just FYI, Todd, we're going to consider assisted living, independent living, and community residences at another time?
Okay.
We just have too many questions about what could come down the pipe.
So there had been a decision, again, to the cannabis, not to have the cannabis uses in the downtown district at all.
So just take those lines out?
Yeah.
Rows, not lines?
And I assume some of the things that were added as special use, like a gas station and the funeral home, that those had been blank because there'd been past policy decisions not to have them downtown either.
Even though we have a funeral home downtown?
Well, I think for the motor vehicle station, we should, I would not be in favor of having that in one, in our fairly small B2 sub-districts.
You're correct, they were blank.
And yet we have several, no?
We do.
In B2?
The funeral homes, you mean?
No, um, service stations.
Oh, but not in the B2?
B2 central business district, yeah.
There's the one on Quincy and then there's one on East.
That's on East.
Oh, well, they're not gas stations, though. I was thinking about, they're specially allowed.
It says motor vehicle service.
They're special uses.
They're specially called out in the code, though, right? I mean, maybe they're not all, but. And it says, or gas station. I don't think we should have a gas station in B2. I mean, maybe, you know, grandfather existing.
Do we just delete the words, or gas station?
Yeah, I think so.
What do you guys think about removing gas station, no car wash? Or just gas station from that use?
Maybe put no car wash or gas station.
Yeah, the definition of motor vehicle service station says, includes establishments where gasoline and/or fuel oil and oil, grease, batteries, tires, and automobile accessories are sold in addition to repair facilities. So maybe that also would need to be changed to not allow the sale of gasoline under the definition of motor vehicle service station. Although I think it's fine if they sell grease, batteries, tires, windshield wipers.
Go back a little bit on my previous comment and say motor vehicle service station, no gas station.
Right, I think we could probably leave the definition as is, but specify that in this particular district, the gas portion is not allowed.
And that would limit the definition?
Right.
Okay, all right, that's fine with me.
That's coming from inside the house.
Should they, just further parsing of this, should a motor vehicle service station, or is it now used, allowed in the public use section of the B2? Public use zone?
They're all blank.
If they're not, then I think we should take that out as a special use. If they aren't, if there are none existing now, I don't think, again, our public use zone should have any kind of service station in the future.
That works. Did you get that?
Yep. How do you feel about funeral home in the public use zone?
Same with that, I would say.
Tempted to say nothing, nothing in the public use zone, but should the village choose to sell or relocate, as was once talked about, let's say, some of the fire stations, then that property would become available.
Then maybe the zone should be re-zoned, redrawn to not be a part of the public use zone any longer.
That would work, too.
Because I assume it is drawn because there are public uses in those areas.
So for B1, we said vocational schools would be special uses. Should we do the same in B2? Currently, they're permitted. Certainly take the P out of the public use one. I'm on page 85 of the PDF.
They should, yes, they should agree. The two should agree with each other.
Any dissent? The vocational school currently is permitted.
So it should be special?
If we're going to be consistent?
Yes.
Special in the public use zone?
No, blank.
No, blank, okay.
I, I think.
I don't, I think everything should be blank in the public use zone.
So going back to motor vehicle service station real quick, the mixed-use periphery is intended, I believe, as like kind of a transition to residential. Is that a place where you feel comfortable with a service station? Because again, it was blank now.
You look at Riverside Garage and the back of it is residential.
Yeah, that's true. Okay.
And Jeff saw it, no, he's not.
How about the addition of schools or just grade in high schools in the downtown? They're added as special uses, it looks like here.
Well, it should be for St. Mary. Aren't they in part of B2?
Yes. But if they were to go away, would you want another school there?
No. I'm just one resident.
Is that one parcel or two? Where the church is and where the parking, parking is on Burlington?
My memory of the variations, they had, they were part R3, part B2, not R3, sorry, R4. So they covered quite a range. So in public use, we're leaving all schools blank, right?
The elementary, high school. Is that what you mean?
Schools elementary, schools professional, schools specialized, instructional.
In the public use zone?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. I agree.
So then, to Attorney Mars' question, what about the mixed-use periphery? Do we want to make any of those blank or leave them special or permitted?
For the schools.
Right, three categories.
I think they're fine.
The two are already permitted.
Well, we said to make vocational special use because that's what it is in B1.
Oh, got it, okay.
And then we have.
I would take place of worship out again here.
Place of worship, place of assembly. Anything else?
Oh, yes. The, the cell, cellphone towers have been added as special uses here, which I did not think you would want macrocell, the big macrocell towers in the downtown.
Currently, those are blank.
Yep.
Shall we keep those blank?
Yes.
Yes.
Good catch.
And then on the electric vehicle charging station, we had the discussion last meeting about defining what those are and limiting it, I think, to commercial stations that are, you know, you're providing charging for payment. And then if we do that, I guess it's okay to leave them all special use. Again, I'm not sure about the public use zone, but I guess that would be okay with me. Other thoughts? So if everyone's agreed to make, to limit the definition to just commercial charging.
It's 10 o'clock and we still have 32 pages by my estimation. Earlier, you said charge through. Do we want to end the meeting?
Yes, yes.
Sorry.
No, we'll, we'll make the adjustments and changes. Again, good discussion. It allows us a little bit more time to follow up on a couple of the questions that were raised this evening and at other meetings. We'll have to think about the scheduling of both, you know, a public hearing notice, perhaps talk about what, what the plan is for putting up the rest of the changes for public hearing. And then, you know, we'll revisit when we see you next.
And Francisco, I appreciate the memo on the gravel drives. You guys were able to read the last three pages of the document, so you're up to date on that?
Yeah, I sent out the letters, so they'll be, I'll be receiving some fun phone calls next week.
Good luck with that.
Yeah.
Okay, our next meeting is May 25. Please try to keep that open. I, we are tired and I apologize for that, but we knew this was going to happen. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Piltier?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
And Chairperson Mateo.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, everybody, for all your hard work, your attention. Riverside TV. We probably have another one of these in our future.
Todd?
Todd, yes.
Thank you, everybody.